I mean, I don't know where you stood, but I was, I guess I was all to think one side says, "You're gonna starve Americans to death. You're gonna take food out of the mouth of babes. You're gonna let old people die and children die." And then the other side says, "There's too much waste over there," and they wanted to cut more. And the theatrics and the drama coming out served nobody well. One of the guys is McGovern, out of the Northeast, I think he's from Maryland. He was out there, he's on the ad committee, and I don't know why, but he's on the ad committee promoting 50 million people are starving in America. That scenario going out, and the whole left side came out promoting that. Fifty million people starving in America, now think about this. Do you know anybody starving in America at that capacity? So, when we were on the ad committee, I kept my mouth shut because I was so mad that it would have been more drama, and so I just chose to be quiet, which Carolyn said that was rare for me. And when it came to the House floor debate, he was up at 50 million starving Americans, and I just said, "You know what? I had enough of that." So I got up and spoke after him because I was supporting the farm bill. It had $20 billion in cuts. Twenty billion dollars in actual cuts to the farm program. No, twenty billion dollars in cuts to the nutritional program, twenty billion dollars in cuts to the farm program. Now, the farm program only pays up 20% of bill. Eighty percent is nutrition. So if you take 20% -- twenty billion from 20% or something, it's a big cut. If you take 20 billion from 80%, it's a little cut, it's 2%. And so that 2% cut was gonna starve 50 million people. And so when it came down to the House floor, I got up there, I said, "I stand in support of this bill, and I have to differ with the gentleman from Maryland." He says, "There's 50 million starving people in America today." I disagree with that. I think there's 330 million people starving, at least two, three times a day, we call it breakfast, lunch, and dinner. And when I said that, the whole left side was like, "Oh, my God, how can I say that?" And I said, "But as far as 50 million nutritionally deprived people in this country, I beg to differ. Not one person will lose a calorie or crumb that deserves it. We're gonna make sure people live. We're gonna make sure that safety net's there." And I don't know if I told you guys, Carolyn and I, incidentally, Carolyn's doing wonderful, this is her first time she's back in about three weeks, and she's happy to be home, and I am so glad that she's up there helping me. But Carolyn and I, when we were, it was about 1920, Jimmy Carter was in office, inflation shot up, interest rates went up to 22%. We lost our job, and so we went on food stamps for about a month and a half, two months. And so I know the value of a safety net program, and so I will do whatever we can to protect people that need that. But it's not a lifestyle, and we need to wean people off. And so there was actual great cuts in the farm program that took direct payments away from farmers. They got rid of over, either removed, reduced, or eliminated over 100 farm programs, saving $20 billion, and it made real nutritional cuts where people don't just pick up a pamphlet because if you pick up a pamphlet, you can automatically qualify for food stamps. And I don't think that's what we want in this country. I don't think that's what it was designed for. And it was a safety net, help people out in times of need so that they get off that as quickly as they can and move on and grow that middle class. So these fights are coming up. I was talking to leadership on the Farm Committee, Mr. Lucas. They've got $40 billion now set up to be removed from the nutritional program, which is doubled. And the left side has gone crazy and rapid about the 20 billion, so it's gonna be interesting. So stay tuned with that, Charlie. I'm gonna turn it over to you, and I'll do whatever you want. Thank you.
I've gone through and tried to categorize the questions so we don't repeat them too many times. There are a lot of questions here. We've got to get through them. Before we get started, let me make a comment. In this district, I've lived in this district for about seven years, and during that time, I never saw the previous congressman. And I want to really appreciate the effort that Ted does to come out, and since his election a year ago, he has been everywhere, and he has met with the people, and he's not hiding. And he's coming out and answering our questions. Okay, first question. There were several questions. I'll try to just kind of summarize them. Any updates on the flat tax, fair tax legislation? Where do you stand with the story with the fair tax?
I stand with the fair tax, and I promote that. There's no question where I stand with that. I was with Vern Buchanan two days ago, who's on a committee that deals with that. I met with John Camp, who's chairman of the Financial Services Committee, and they said, "Where do you stand? What would you like to say?" I said, "The fair tax. Does that have a chance this year?" He goes, "You know what? We're gonna look at it this year." Talking to Vern last week, he said, "I don't know if that's gonna go through." He goes, "They've talked about it. What it's gonna take for it to get through is you guys have done a great job. The grassroots movement has done a great job. Who hasn't done a good job is industry. We had probably seven industries in it, people like Disney, Boeing, Lockheed Martin, UPS. The collection of this group represented about a third of the workforce in America, and it was their accountants and the people dealing with their tax policies. And they were up there looking to get some tax relief, and they're willing to go to 25% and get rid of the loopholes if we'll go to 25% because America's losing its competitive edge around the world."
That's right.
We hear this over and over again, whether it's the ambassador from Morocco or Iraq or one of these other countries, Japan. He says, "You guys," they all say this, "You guys are losing your competitive edge around the world. You're still ahead, but you're dropping fast." And you know how things are. They start changing, and it goes slow, but by the time you realize it, it's too late. Anyways, these corporations wanted it 25%, and they said, "We'll give up a lot of loopholes, but that'll make us competitive." And I said personally, "I think you're shooting not low enough. I think you need to go to 20% to make it permanent."
That's right.
More importantly, you need to lock it in.
Yep.
But then I said, "But better than that is, have any of you looked at the fair tax and studied it from a taxing perspective for your industries? Not listened to somebody that's watched Fox News, or somebody that was at CNN or went to CNN and watched it and had an opinion and told you how good or bad it was? Have you done the research yourself from an accounting standpoint?" Not one of them could say they did. And I said, "I think you're shortchanging yourself. You've got an opportunity here to make a big impact on changing our tax structure, and we're all in agreement. It's messed up." And I said, "And you come here wanting to go to 25% on a government-controlled rate. You understand if we get the flat tax or the fair tax in there, it gets rid of all federal taxes, it gets rid of the inheritance tax, it gets rid of the IRS, and April 15th is just another day." So we need to build this effort, this grassroots effort, more and more. Encourage, write your congressman. You can write me, but I'm already in support of it. What I have seen, and I set this down at a Tea Party thing I did a week or two ago, is the people that are the face of the fair tax, one of the congressmen from Georgia walks around with his fair tax pin. I never hear him talk about it. I was in a meeting with Dave Camp, chairman of the Tax Committee. Never brought it up, and I said, "What about fair tax?" "Oh, yeah, you know, we're gonna look at that." We're at this meeting with all these executives. This Georgia congressman was in there with his fair tax thing on. Never brought it up. I was the one who brought it up. And I'm thinking, "Are you just wearing that to say you support the fair tax, or do you really want the fair tax? It's a difference." You know, it's like dressing up for a football game and sitting on the bench or being on the field. I never liked being on the bench. And so those things have gotta change. We've gotta get a louder voice up there. You guys have done a great job. Every Tea Party I go around and speak to, we were at the Young Americans up in DC last week, spoke to about 300 young students. And it was awesome because they loved the fair tax. So we've gotta get the word out. This is a great time to do it. This will be coming up probably September or October. Call Chairman Camp, get letters to him, and make it a grassroots effort. You guys know somebody in Georgia. You know somebody in Minnesota. You know somebody in California. This is where the true grassroots movement goes, and that's what we need to do to get it in, and that was an extremely long answer. I apologize.
Okay, next question. Why aren't the new senators and House representatives banning together more to oppose Bonner and McCain and the like? And why are there so many of them newly elected that backed the elitist agenda?
So which one?
Elitist agenda.
Oh, the elitist agenda. From a lack of unity. We talk a lot about different things on our side, and I'm just gonna be real blunt with you. There's probably four or five factions of the Republican Party that they're not coalesced together. This one has this agenda, this one has this agenda. We try to get them to rally around a certain thing. I think what Justin Amash did was a fantastic example because he brought something leadership didn't want. And the way he did that, I asked him. I said, "How did you do that?" And we had enough votes to bring down a rule. Bringing down a rule, when you go to vote for that, is like telling leadership, "You don't like them, you don't agree with what they're saying, and it's a disgrace to leadership." So he said he had enough, he wanted this brought up. And you think about how close he got. I think it was 400, no, 202 votes to 200 and some votes. It was 17, it was by 7 votes shy. That's very significant. They got his attention, and we're gonna keep working in that. I was with him yesterday at breakfast meeting with some other people. There's a lot of conservatives, and the neat thing is there's Democrats coming to this group too, which is significant. And the same thing needs to happen on the Senate side. In fact, I think it needs to happen more on the Senate side. And the thing is, the Senate, there's four people really holding up progress in America. And I don't wanna say progress in the way that's bad. And I don't wanna say any word for word. I've gotten away. I don't use that. It just has a bad feeling. But it's the President, Harry Reid, Nancy Pelosi, and Cindy Boyer. They're standing in the way of the Keystone Fight Line. Harry Reid won't bring it up. We've written letters to him. We've encouraged everybody to write letters to him and just say, "This is what is best for America." You know, so those coalitions are forming. The Senate is not, I mean, they're a minority, so it'll be a while. And that's why the 2014 election is so important, that we've gotta get behind people. Bill Nelson won't be there for, I mean, he's in there for another five and a half years. But we need people that are willing to stand up and go against, I don't wanna say go against leadership, go for what's best for America and bring people with you. And all I can tell you, Charlie, and I don't wanna, I hate to say that we're working on it because that was one of the things. I don't want you to work on it. I just wanna fix. But that's where we're at in the House.
Next question. What kind of communication do congressmen pay attention to most? Emails, petitions?
Listen up here. My wife, Carolyn. She'll say it won't do any good. He doesn't listen to me either. I think what I listen to the most is probably the letters that get written. You know, we get thousands of letters a week in emails, and those all get put into a system that we get a report. There's, say, 1,000 letters came in this week. 250 dealt with gun control, 250 dealt with immigration, 500 dealt with the budget. And so that's what we listen to. It's probably emails and letters, phone calls, stuff like this. People come up to us. We take this right back to Washington. It comes right from you to me, and then just go write stuff down, and then we do what we can. Let me give you an example. It was last week. We were down at the Tea Party in the Nostalgia area, and a guy said, "Steve Stockman's got a bill that's gonna look into the birth certificate again. Would you be willing to co-sponsor it?" So I called Steve up. I said, "When I got back there?" "Yeah, we're doing it. Would you wanna get on that?" And I said, "Yeah." And I said, "I like to talk with Sarah Barfire." And so that came right from there to here. Then I asked, and I'll ask you guys, is that really where we should be spending our time? But I'm gonna check into that because in order to have freedom, you have to have economic freedom. And our country's at $17 trillion in debt. We need to change the dynamics of that. We need a paradigm shift on our spending. So we can go over here, and that can be another distraction, but then they said, "Well, if it is truly illegal, he shouldn't be there. We can get rid of everything. He's not." I said, "I agree with that, but is that the best way to spend our time?" So, you know, this is gonna come from you guys. I wanna get our debt under control because if we don't have our debt under control, we don't have freedom in this country.
We had several questions, and they all are around the same thing. Obamacare, will it be overturned, and will any of the scandals, the IRS, Benghazi, the phony scandals and so forth, can they be overturned, and how are you gonna position yourself on the major scandals that are addressing these states?
Okay, just to go back to the last question, email, letters, and Carolyn and you guys. That's how you get in contact with me. The scandals. What was the first part of the question?
IRS, Benghazi, Obamacare.
The phony scandal. When he said that, we sent out a fright message that says, "Phony scandals, Mr. President, really? The four people that died in Benghazi, you're telling me that's phony? Tell that to the families that lost those four family, those four family members. Tell them that was a phony scandal. There's nothing phony about that. The phony thing is that they stood up there, and they knew. I mean, I had the opportunity to be on Foreign Affairs. We get this information. Their own report that Hillary Clinton commissioned, the ARB report, Accountability Review Board, said it wasn't a lack of money. It was a lack of security, and it was a lack of management at the upper top levels. There's nothing phony about that. It's a lack of management. It's a lack of doing what's right. And then they said it was an act of terror in the report, and then the administration came out with the video, and that was all done for political purposes. There's nothing that you can tell me different, and this needs to get to the bottom. We were supposed to interview this guy last week that was the, he was one of the main guys that was in charge on the State Department, and he wound up canceling. Because he, we didn't get the real story why he canceled, but this has gotta be gone into. People say, "Well, why does that matter?" My opinion is this. Why does it matter? Go back to what Mrs. Clinton said. What difference does it make? What difference does it make how he died or why he died? He's dead. I'll tell you what difference it makes. You've got the integrity and the character of the United States government, and if we as citizens can't trust our own government, how the heck can we trust, how can we expect anybody else to respect our government? And you're seeing it in the Middle East. President says, "Order and draw a red line." By God, if you go over that, there's gonna be consequences. Well, they went over that. There was no consequences. And we see this over and over again, and this procs me. I know I'm in New York, I'm gonna tone it down, but it just aggravates me that it just aggravates me, and I know it aggravates you guys, that they don't have more integrity to say, "This is what happened. We're sorry it happened this way. We should have done this." And then had the right response to that so that nobody would ever wanna do that again because it emboldens people, and it's gonna happen again and again and again until we stand up. Iran's doing the same thing. How long have we been going on and saying, "Well, if you keep working on those nuclear bombs, we're gonna go ahead, and we're gonna tighten up the sanctions, and then there's gonna be military force"? Heck, we've been saying that for 30 years, and Iran keeps building them. They're about a year and a half, six months to two years is what I can find a way from developing that.
Attached to that same question.
Those ladies had our hand up. I'd be wanting to do that.
Well, we're gonna have a tough time getting through all the questions, but attached to that question, is anybody ever gonna be charged with any of these offenses, and will anybody ever be brought to bear with responsibility for what they've done in all these cases?
I can only hope that that'll happen. You know, Trey Gowdy, Jim Jordan, Darrell Issa, Jason Chaffetz, they're gonna get to the bottom of that. Somebody will, somebody's gonna be held accountable. And, you know, with the American people, again, this goes back to you guys, demand it. This is your government. Demand that they bring these people accountable. We've written some legislation where Hillary Clinton says, "It doesn't matter if you can't fire anybody." We changed that with some legislation. Now, we passed it in the House. Is Harry Reid gonna pick it up? See, that just stopped right there, and we've gotta figure out a way to change that. And so, yes, my wholehearted opinion is yes, it will.
Why does FEMA buy so much ammo, MRDs? Why are the police forces being militarized, and who are they, who are they going to fight?
I just read the answer on that. We looked into that, and Jessica's in that one with constituent males, and it's probably, it's in the first third of that book. What they're doing is they go through training exercises. There's, under FEMA, if I remember right, let me read this response because it's a good response. Thank you. Let me put this to Charlie. Let's see. "Thank you for contacting me. I thought I said stand apart. There's been recent reports of Department of Homeland Security purchasing millions of rounds, and it goes through FEMA too. FEMA is doing it also, and the whole thing is there's people that carry guns in FEMA, some of the offices, and they go through and they procure X amount every year, and it gets spent for target practicing. And, you know, it's like the police force, the fish, and one of the ones was under the Department of Homeland Security, ICE, and NOAA. NOAA is in charge of your National Marine and Fishery Services. Those are the guys on the water protecting, you know, like your commercial fishermen's hobbies of recreational fishermen. And it says that these guys have been doing this, and it's just a natural progression of things that once, every so often, they allocate X amount of money that goes out. And there's a bill that we signed onto with Mark Meadows, and it's, the Mark Meadows Amendment was introduced June 5th, and the purpose of it was to agree to a reported vote. This amendment places a freeze on new ammunition procurement contracts until DHS and FEMA supports a full report to Congress on its ammunition purchases for fiscal year 2013. And so that's what we've done. As an advocate for, you know, effective taxpayer use in government dollars, we wanna know why we're doing this. And so we want them to justify it before they go out and do it. So that's where we're at on that.
Okay. With the recent Obama administration decision to shut down our coal fossil fuel plants, what steps are being taken to stop that?
37% of our power comes from coal-fired power plants. It's a disaster. He's got a 21-page document out there on green energy initiatives. Again, we need to stand up and let that be known. That's bad for America. I mean, they're attacking the coal industry. There's been several bills stopping that, and again, it goes from the House and Senate. We pass it. But one of the things was the coal ash. After a power plant burns that stuff, there's sediment. That sediment's taken, it's used in drywall. In fact, that's the biggest use. That goes in our drywall. In fact, the EPA has it in their building. And there was a ruling, they're trying to make that illegal. And if that's illegal, that's not just gonna affect the price of electricity, but all your building materials are gonna go up too. So it's a cascade effect. We've written legislation that we've passed in the House. There was, I think, three bills last week that we voted to take, say, "You can't do that." So that's where we're at on that.
I'm increasingly concerned about the federal government's encroachment on the sovereignty of states. This is so far from what the founders intended. What are you doing to restore our great state sovereignty?
We're putting a lot of that back to the states and says, "Say, this is a Tenth Amendment right." And, you know, I'll give you a good example. On the farm bill, there was an amendment. We called it the Chicken Egg Amendment, but it's not a proper name for it, but that's basically what it said. California, State of California had an initiative out there. Put it on their ballot, change their constitution on how eggs were raised. Because they didn't like how eggs were raised in California and was driven by the Humane Society. They wanted bigger cages for chickens. Now, this is important stuff we do in Congress. So they wanted to raise, it was like 70 square inches per chicken to 90 inches to 120 inches per chicken over the next 15 years. And so it starts in California, this initiative. California passes it. So what happens in California's egg prices is it goes way up because now it's doubled the cost of farmers to raise their chickens. And so the price goes way up, so consumers don't like the high-priced eggs, so they start importing them from other states. Well, when California finds out about it, they say, "Oh, no. If you're gonna sell eggs to our state, you're gonna have to raise them by our standards." And they were trying to implement that over all the nation. California, through a Humane Society initiative, was saying, "This is how we're gonna raise eggs." My argument was to the egg people, 90% of the eggs are United Egg Producers. 90% of them are members of the United Egg Producers. I voted against what they wanted because they said, "This is coming. It's gonna happen." I said, "You can't allow this to happen because what's gonna happen? As soon as you go to the bigger cage, they're gonna say, 'We want free-range eggs.'" And I said, "Every day is gonna be an Easter egg hunt." And I said, "Worse than that, when you pull that egg away from a chicken, you're gonna have a center of counseling." I said, "I told the guy, and he started laughing like you, and he goes, 'You know what? You're probably right.'" And I said, "We can't have somebody with an agenda pushing this when you've got 100, 150 years of practice management, best practice management, all these land-grant universities that we're spending money on, telling you, 'This is what we've come up with in the industry to raise our animals properly.'" You know, and so that's one of the things that we're doing. We're paying attention. Steve King wrote a bill, and it was a great bill. It was based solely on the Tenth Amendment. And so many of the issues I come up with, I don't wanna bring it up, but one of the DOMA, the Defense of America Act, you know, how the Supreme Court ruled, and we gotta ask how you stand on that. I said, "I'm a Christian conservative. I believe marriage is between a man and a woman." But it's also but it's a state's right issue, and I need, the federal government, I personally think they need to stay out of that. Then I went on and told a reporter, I says, "But more importantly, I think it's a sad state of affairs in America today that we as a society are so confused that we have to redefine what marriage is. It's an institution that's been around for thousands of years. You know, I feel like it's ordained by God. And are we that confused as a country that we have to start redefining these things? You know, the Constitution already protects that. Life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness. You define what that is. The federal government needs to protect the Constitution, so that's another state of affairs.
Let me add my caveat to that. One of the issues that we're dealing with in Oakwood County is the school board's adoption of Common Core. And what happens is, in the state, the state is dangling so much money in front of the counties, and that money's coming from the federal government. So the federal government is getting into our school system with huge amounts of money, billions and billions of dollars. So how can the state turn down, you know, whatever it is, billions of dollars with the school system that eventually gets down to the school board? So where's the sovereignty?
Thank you, Charlie. You just really wanted to make this contentious. I only talked about DOMA. Now you wanna talk about Common Core, dude. I checked in the Common Core, and when I read it, because I was against it, you know, we heard it was Agenda 21, it was United Nations, it was all this. It was a group of governors that got together and says, "We need to raise the bar on our standards." So there was a group of governors, individual states, got together, and they said, "Let's do this to raise the standards, to get away from testing on the FCATs, the federally mandated test scores." They wanted to get away from that, so that's what they went to. And I said, "You know what? If this is the governors of individual states, and they're doing it independently, and it's voluntary, that's a state's right issue, right?" Where I have a problem is when President Obama says, "Hey, this is a great idea. We'll tie it to race to the top, and we're gonna tie it to mandates with money on it." I am 100% against that. So in its original intent from a state level, you need to talk to Keith Perry. I saw you back there somewhere. It's a state's rights issue. And so if you don't like it, you need to let your county know. You need to let your state legislators know, and the government know. We don't want it because some states are pulled out of it. And so that's where I stand. I'm at. I mean, that may not be the answer you want, but when I researched it, the governors, if they get together, they're elected by the people. That's what they wanna do? That's their choice and your choice. I wanna keep the federal government from locking in a mandate that says, "We're gonna mandate Common Core, and here's your money, but you have to do it our way." I'm against that. I'm against that.
There were several questions about the disrespect of being paid to Tea Party by accomplishment, uh, the undermining of Tea Parties throughout, is it all ties into, is the Tea Party paraphrasing, is the Tea Party ineffective and are they being respected in your opinion?
Crazy, wacko, radical people you are. You guys, we are a force that they listen to. They don't like to hear it. I mean, I was listening to a video of Alan Grayson last night. I used to think that, that guy is very smart. And he was saying that the Republican Party has been taken over by, um, it's got its conservative core and then the right-wing radical Tea Parties. What's wrong with that? Not, darn thing wrong with it. The problem is this, he's right, we are too splintered in the Republican Party. The Democratic Party, they're united. Now, they've got different philosophies. You've got the Democratic Progressive Party, which is about 71, 72 members. You greet the platform of the Democratic Progressive Party, it's a socialist platform, period, you can't deny it. So therefore, those people that are members of that, I would believe would be socialist. The other portion believes in socialism, bigger government, government knows all, the government can handle things better. They believe in that. So their message is united, one wants to go further to the left, the other one is okay with that. We on the other side, we've got the moderate Republicans or the rhinos, that just want to get along, you know, that's not that bad. TSA is not that bad. They're all like that, then you have us that says, no, no, we voted for the NSA, I mean, the deep on the NSA, we voted for the MASH Amendment, voted against NBAA. They didn't like that. So we're a smaller number, we're not moving in the same direction in their lines of problems. We have to become more unified and again, it's going to be by changing, personally I feel, changing leadership. I mean, when you talk to Tom Ainge. He's a great guy, talking to him one-on-one, but he's not going in the direction that I think we in our heart want to go. You know, Common Core values, founding principles in our Constitution. And until we become united like that, we're going to be splintered and that's where 2014 is so, it's going to be a dangerous election. Because if Pelosi gets back in there and that's the whole OFA organizing for America's agenda, is to get all these Democrats back in so that they have the majority of both Houses and America will change more drastically than has in the last four and a half years.
Well, who's moving, Bob? Who's in the voice in there and who pushes it?
Obama. I wish I could answer that. You know, I don't want to get into any conspiracy things, but bills come out that you're like, why don't we, why didn't this come out? You know, it's like, we shouldn't, why are we worried about this? You know, we've got the debt ceiling vote that we've got to worry, and that's going to be a very tough fight. I mean, they're going to, they're going to do everything they can to make us raise the debt ceiling again. Um, I can answer for you.
Uh, I'm not familiar with this provision, but the Nebraska provision, are you familiar with that?
What is that? Somebody remind me.
Providing Congress with, uh, the same rules as everybody else under Obamacare. Why is Congress being granted a waiver which automatically gets Congress $1,011,000 subsidy?
That's not right.
Ain't it great? I mean, this is a sad state of affairs. In fact, Ron DeSantis and Matt Salmon wrote a letter to the Washington Post, I think it was, and they're bringing forth legislation that we're going to sign onto it, says, all laws that come out of Congress, and we shouldn't have to do it because the Constitution already says this, all laws that come out of Congress shall be, all members of Congress must abide by these laws too, they're not excluded. OPM, Office of Personal Management, came out with a, a ruling the other night, it was I think two days ago, that says Congress and the White House can be exempt from participating in Obamacare. We're writing legislation that says, oh no, we're not. So these are the things that come out. Let me tell you where the real problem is. We've been taken over by administrative agencies, your EPA's, your OSHA's and things like this. There's a great book, if you haven't read it, it's called, um, The New Rogue Serpent, written by Daniel Hannah. He's a member of the British Parliament and he talks about how the European Union, the nation-states elect the president. Everybody else is appointed. They're appointed, they're not elected, they're appointed to an agency. Let me tell you what the problem with this is. Lynn Jenkins wrote a bill here, it doesn't go far enough, but it starts to address this. These administrative agencies have the power of law, they have the power to find, put, enforce the regulation, the amount of fine, and then they can enforce it without judiciary review. Give you an example of how bad this is. Last year, there was 98,000, 93,000 lawsuits against these agencies, private lawsuits, where people were saying, you know what, I'm not going by that rule. There was 980-some thousand individual, um, go ahead, instances, situations where they went in front of the agency and got fined. I'll give you a case in point. Got a guy, he's a Filipino doctor, we talked to, sent us a letter. He's a doctor, mild meat guy, I could just see him practicing. He wanted to be a doctor. He was down, he moved forward, wanted to work part-time, so he goes, he's at a clinic in Tampa, gives him his driver's license number, social security number, his doctor's license. Well, it was one of those clinics that was doing Medicare for all. He's a doctor, he's just seeing patients, you know, he's helping people. Two and a half years later, he gets called, he doesn't even get called in front of this board for, um, for a hearing. He gets fined $2.3 million, he's got to pay back. He says, they never, they never interviewed me, they never brought me in front of a panel, they just sent me this letter. How do you fight that? How do you fight an agency? That's what's happening in America and that's why so many of our laws and the process is so messed up because we've turned this over. Legislation we have coming out now is to pull this back in, to cut off the authority of these agencies. One of them is with the EPA, anything to do with ag. You can't pass a bill that's going to affect farmers unless it goes through the Ag Committee and judiciary review. And so I'm impressed that we're getting on top of that.
Had several questions that came up about Obamacare, defunding Obamacare, and kind of, can you go back over that?
I will and I'm, I'm, I'm.
Because we're, we'd like to better clarification on the defunding of Obamacare.
I personally feel in my heart that this will be refunded and will be done away with. The brown swell is coming. Businesses are mad, people are starting to get mad, the unions are mad. Did you guys see the three letters that the union sent to the president? I kind of liked it. We supported you on this and helped you pass it. You lied to us, you need to fix it and you need to fix it now, basically is what it said. When you have that kind of force behind this, I think it's going, I personally feel it's going to go away. We've got to big house, push in the house to get rid of this. This is what we're doing in our office for you guys, if you want to get rid of Obamacare. We ran on getting rid of it and wanted to bury it and we have not let off on that. There's 21 taxes in there, separate taxes, medical advice tax, um, other taxes, there's one called the suntanning tax, which is a 10% tax. And so all the ones that have not been written to repeal these taxes, we're writing in our offices and I think it's 11 or 12 of them. We're writing to repeal those, that's part of the funding mechanism for Obamacare. The other thing is since we all know that tax bill is supposed to originate in the House, it's originating in the Senate, we're writing legislation to repeal it, not, not the Affordable Care Act, we're writing a bill to repeal the Affordable Care Act. All right? Because it's unconstitutional. If it started in the Senate and the Supreme Court told us it's a tax, so let's agree. I agree, it's a tax. Well, by God, if it started over here, it's supposed to start over here, it's unconstitutional, so therefore it has to go away. Right, Mr. President? And then everybody goes, well, what's your answer? What's your replacement? HR 2300, Tom Bryce's bill, he's a doctor out of Georgia, orthopedic surgeon, he's got a great replacement. It gives the care back to you, gets rid of the IPAT board, the whole thing goes away. And we had a medical forum last week and this is so poignant, and I mean, this lady, she couldn't have done better. She was there cheering for Obamacare, she kind of being a doctor, say every time we said something, yeah, that's right, that's why we need that. She had colon cancer, 35 years of age and she's telling her story. And when she got done, I said, ma'am, I said, how, how did you get treatment? Well, we had insurance. My husband has a business, we have our own insurance. I said, and that's the way it should be, shouldn't it? She goes, well, yeah, but it gets really expensive for some people. I said, the only reason you got treatment was that she's 35 years old. She had, um, colon cancer in her family, her dad died of it, so she goes to her doctor, says, I'd like to get examined, I won't use any intro, she goes, I want to be examined and he says, no, you're too young, we don't need to worry about it. Well, she insisted. So he says, okay, well, go ahead and, well, they found a polyp, it was malignant, they treated her, she had two surgeries over a five-year period of time, she's clean. Go to the Affordable Care Act, you've got a review board, DIAPAT board, Independent Payment Advisor Board, unelected people, appointed people, one doctor on the board, they're going to say, they're going to look at numbers, they're not going to look at the patient, and they're going to say, 35-year-old woman, um, we don't need to do colonoscopy on her for 10 years until she's 50. That lady would have been dead in that scenario. And when I laid that out, she kind of just put her head down and didn't say anymore. Because that's where we're heading if we don't get rid of that. I want that doctor's care between you and me, Mary.
That's right.
I want me to be able to sit down, I want to be able to say, when you tell me, you know we're not going to do that, I'm going to have this done, I want this done. I have the right to ask for that. And I'll find a doctor that'll say, yeah, we'll do that, if you're that concerned about it, I'll treat the patient. So I truly believe it's going to go away, there's just too much momentum going in the positive direction. People are seeing how ugly this bill is and how painful it's going to be. When you have the young people, insurance going up 125 to 175%, they're not going to pay for this. It's unsustainable. Our country's going broke with Medicare, Medicaid, just, just those two programs, those are unsustainable programs, they are broke. We can put Band-Aids on them and we can extend them out maybe another 10, 15 years, but they are going broke regardless, period. Nobody can tell you anything different. They can extend them, but they're going broke. And now you're going to put another $2 trillion on the, on the, on the economy? And then you get what Detroit does, they go bankrupt. And then they want to dump, their retirees can the Affordable Care Act because they messed up in Detroit.
That's right.
We build out the car companies so Detroit would have these car companies. We build them out, GM and these companies, and they go to China. Well, we need them because we can't, they're too big to fail. In my opinion, the only thing too big to fail is America.
Let me carry that on a little bit because one of the, that thought is, yes, you want to repeal Obamacare, but many congressmen are saying, what are you going to replace it for? So is there going to be a replacement?
HR 2300, Tom Bryce's bill, it's the, I forget the name of the bill, it's something like Fairness and, it's out there right now. And so I talked to Tom Bryce, I talked to Eric Paner, I talked to some of these other people, that this is our plan, we want to repeal, repeal all these other taxes and then repeal the whole law based on constitutionality of the tax, it's an unconstitutional tax. I'm not even going to talk about healthcare, I want to get rid of the tax. All right? And then I had a little fun with Boehner, I told him about the suntanning tax and he goes, I didn't know that was in there. I said, yes, 10% tax. I said, he goes, well, he goes, that's probably not meant, that's big of a deal. I said, it's a racist tax. He started laughing. And he goes, you know what? It is. And I had an Indian doctor in our office the other day, very dark-skinned and two non-dark-skinned people, and I asked, I said this to him and they started laughing, I said, have you ever been to a tanning booth? He goes, no, no need. So therefore, it's a racist tax and I thought I might even go get to a suntanning booth twice so that I can come out and say, I've been disenfranchised because I got taxed because of the color of my skin. I mean, as crazy as that sounds, that's what the left of, right? I got to work for them, I work for us. I don't want to get that silly, but you can't deny the facts.
Okay. Uh, we promised, we promised hit Ted out of here by 10, 11 o'clock because we had another engagement. But this will be the last question and, uh, I just couldn't get to all the questions, so we tried, but probably out of all the questions, there were a lot of questions on immigration, where should the bill go, what should be first, secure the borders, uh, where are we with the whole immigration bill and where are we headed?
Uh, where we're at with that is there's four bills coming out of the House, uh, one deals with border security, Mike McCall, one deals with guest worker program for ag, another one deals with, um, the E5 worker, the standard visas and things like that. The sentiment of the House, of that 70 group of people, that you've probably read about in, which I'm proud to remember, we're not going forward until you secure the border, period. And I'm at, we're adamant about that. Now, I'm, I'm representing you guys, some people say, well, we need to do this, we need to do this. Without securing the border and proving it's secured, it's fruitless to go further. The bills are already on the, on the book to secure our border, they're not enforcing it, so to go through all this fluff and, and make it sound like you're going to help this group out or help this group out, to assume that they're going to go ahead and pay or close the borders and enforce those laws, I think is a joke and it's a, it's a disgrace and an insult to the American people. Secure the border and then when you come back and tell us they're secured and we can verify that, Rand Paul wants to do a yearly check, write the bill, secure the borders and then we'll check it in a year. And then after that point, come talk to us. And until we do that, we can't move forward. The next step would be to 40% of the people that are here illegally are overstayed visas. That should be an easy fix. Hey, if you're here on an overstayed visa, you've got 30 days or 45 days to show up and identify yourself, pay the fine or leave according to what your visa status was. Now we've got the 60%, and then I've got the farmer, say, well, we can't, we've got to have the guest worker program, John, for pine straw or for the dairy or this. I agree, we do. But if we've got 11,800 people in here illegally and we secure the border, they're still here. All right? And I don't want to stop them coming across, I just want them to come legally.
Amen.
And we've got to do that. It's all 100% securing the border first. It's not just an immigration issue, it's more importantly, a national security issue. We've got people coming across the desert, they caught the guy that works with Hezbollah, he's a, they call him the double seven of Hezbollah, they caught him and found out he's brought over 1,500 people here illegally that don't like us, that want to blow us up. And so, secure the border, period. And then when we verify that, we'll move forward.
Let me remind you that, uh, after Ted leaves, we have another part of this program that's extremely important and, uh, it's going to be valuable and we want your input on a lot of issues, so please don't go as soon as Ted leaves and he's going to leave so fast you can't follow him anyway. Would you like to, uh, leave with the closing remarks?
I do. Number one, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate you guys sending me out there and I thank you truly. And my views have not changed, God, country, family, our founding principles, our core values and our Constitution is a roadmap. It's a complicated mess up there, but we can fix it, it has to be fixed. And as great as our challenges and struggles are in America that we're here today, you know, we need to talk about what's good about America, the greatness of America, and the greater the struggle and the victory, or the greater the struggle, the greater the victory is on the other side. And I truly believe in my heart that America is poised with greatness, again, that we can give back our competitive edge, government's role is to protect our country, follow the Constitution and the whole purpose for this is we should be making America bigger, better and stronger where everybody in the world wants to come to our country, to live the American dream. But I would rather transport that ideology to them and show them how to help them to do it in their country. So that the world, we can look down the road, we spend all of our time maybe going on a space race like Kennedy did in the 60s. You think about what Kennedy did in the 60s. We had, in the 60s, I know some of us were up in there, some of us remember it, some of us don't. You had the Vietnam War, you had the civil rights, you had the drug culture, the anti-drug culture, you had people being shot at Kent State. You had the psychedelic music, you had Jimi Hendrix and you had beginning of Nehru suits were coming out at the end of there, or Leger suits. And we survived that because we had a young president that had a dream and a vision for this country. And everybody said, well, he was a Democrat. He wasn't a Democrat, but he was a, he was an American and a leader.
That's right.
Reagan did the same thing in the 80s. The greatness of America, the vision, beacon on top of the hill. What we need is we don't need to be Tea Parties, we don't need to be Republicans and RACs. We need to pull together with a common vision. We need to go out there. We need to get engaged. You guys are engaged. It's the people that aren't here that we need to get engaged. Need to get voter registered. We need to go out. Let me tell you where we're at if I got a few, uh, just a minute. Organizing for America is starting August 4th. Around the country, enlisting movie stars and rock stars, signing people up for Obamacare. They're gonna do this in mass. Their benchmark of success come October 1st is to have 8 million people signed up. And they're gonna say, see, it's successful. But it's a joke, Tom. It's like people back in the Amway business with MCI. They slammed them in there and then they fell out. It was successful until they dropped out. That's what's gonna happen with Obamacare. They're gonna say, it's successful because there's 8 million people in there. Six months later, they're gonna drop out. And we're gonna be stuck with this bill. And so we have gotta be, and then they're gonna go on to immigration and then the next thing is gun control. OFA has already got this strategized. So over the summer, you're gonna hear a lot about this. We have got to unite and become one. We've gotta rally around a mission. We've gotta rally around a vision for this country, the greatness of this country. And I say, let's rally around it and bring America back to where it needs to be, where that flag represents something. And it's gonna take all of us working with our executive committees on the Republican Party. It's gonna take us working with all the different Tea Parties. Because somebody says, well, I don't like that one. I don't like it. I didn't like the way they did the bulletin. You know? Get over it. We've got bigger things to do. You know, we've got bigger things to do. And we need to go out in masks and unite people and get young people involved. And I am so proud of the young people that have stepped up. Like with Young Americans, there's organizations in here and you should invite them in. Young Americans, young Republicans, they have high school campuses, they have college campuses. Go out and speak to the campuses and let's sell a vision about what America can be. And we have the opportunity that becomes the American dream. And we don't ever wanna get rid of that because that is the basis of what we do. And we're ordained by our God, our Creator, and our rights come from a Creator. And that we have a constitution to protect it. And I'm not willing to give that up. And I know you're not either. Thank you.
You wouldn't believe it, the 10, 9-minute Woodstock we had here. I don't want Steve Lelley, Pastor Bill, and the countryside Baptist church. I want y'all to look over here. This is Jessica Northwick. She runs, she works in our office engaging. If you need anything, she is a great advocate for everybody here. She's done a great job.
... people out there that have had to sign secrecy agreements. And there's been stuff in the last few days, they're changing their names. They're doing all this kind of stuff. Uh, what's going, the question is, what's going on? There's something that's... What's going on with the Benghazi survivors? Interesting question. Isn't it sort of amazing if you think about it? Thought on Benghazi?
No.
No, okay. Thought on Benghazi?
Yes. There is a public plan right now trying to get John Boehner to establish a special committee to police the investigation on Benghazi. John Wolf, no, Frank Wolf, is trying to get that special committee to be, uh, established in Congress to finish the Benghazi investigation. And I would like for Congressman Yoohoo to support Frank in that effort.
Yeah, Benghazi Special Committee or even I've seen Special Prosecutor, Special Committee to Investigate Benghazi. Just a personal comment, as somebody who's trying to pay attention. I watch that the Democrats manage the Benghazi thing with awe.
I know.
You know, it's like, there's 35 survivors? How the heck have they been able to hide? You can't, I mean, we know who's screwing who everywhere in Hollywood. And right three hours later, it's a headline. Right? We don't know about 35 Benghazi survivors. So we want support for, uh, Charlie, if you take this down, with support for a special committee on Benghazi, right?
Yes.
Halaq.
I have another issue. And the smart meter grid.
Smart meter grids.
Now, this is more serious than we realize. I actually specialize in health and I actually from all over the country. Black people don't have any anxiety. This is Armageddon. We're not exaggerating. People getting sick, very sick. If you don't get sick, you are going to get cancer. Okay? Because it creates, form, it makes, they talk to each other, it's a myth. I have a long story.
Smarts.
Oh, one more thing. It's the new deal by both funding. It's been mandated on every housing apartment. And, and you won't be able to sue the medical company if you get sick.
All right, did everybody hear that there?
Give them a microphone.
I have to believe GRU is hot on that somewhere, right? We've seen it. And this is Dr. Halaq Talmore, he's an expert in public health issues. And he's saying there's major health issues around this. Charlie, there's... Who's taking you to this one? Let's stop it. You got it. Up there. Awesome.
Give them a microphone.
Awesome. Thank you. So the issue, not only is, are there ideological issues? Do you want your air conditioning controlled by Mr. Hudson or Mike Byer or somebody? There's also major health issues. Right? That's really the issue. Thank you. Another issue.
Dodd-Frank.
Dodd-Frank. Community banks.
They're getting slaughtered by the... They all... I didn't get that. Thank you. Give that to me again. The Dodd-Frank bill... Turn the switch off.
Jesus Christ.
You hear me now?
Yes.
We have all the technical...
Say something.
The Dodd-Frank bill is, uh, killing the community banks all across the country. There was a bunch of write-ups in the densest sun this week. Uh, a lot of it was, I believe, erroneous information. Some of it was probably true, but didn't have anything to do with Dodd-Frank so much as it had to do with, uh, because anyway, the bill, uh, is so slanted toward the big banks, national banks all around the country, that smaller banks throughout the country cannot survive. If you look at the details of all of that, you'll find that hundreds of them are going out of business. And they, they are the banks that serve locally small businesses and, and especially anything related to the community. So we need to get Ted, uh, wrapped up on...
Doing something, fixing or changing Dodd-Frank. Just a quick comment on Dodd-Frank. I can't help myself. I teach economics sometimes. I go around, people don't understand the impact of Dodd-Frank, which basically redid the banking business, but the banking business in general. Let me tell you, perhaps the major economic factor that has made our nation what it is economically is easy access to capital. And every time the people in the government restrict your ability, always in the name of saving you from yourself, restrict your ability to transfer money from savers to users, the economy is egregiously injured. It's Dodd-Frank, probably with Obamacare, are two of the most terrible things done to our society in the last 50 years. How many people, if you can't borrow money, if you can't get, forget borrowing, whether it's an equity investment or borrowing, or going to your cousin to invest in your new business. If you can't get the money to start it, or you can't get the money to grow, or you can't hire people, you can't satisfy the need. Right? And people don't seem to understand the role of banks. They're not evil. They make 2.5% for basically letting you take the money out of your mattress, up from under your mattress and giving it to, renting it on your behalf to somebody to use productively. And we're just getting killed with this. And one of the major problems and a lot of the reasons we have such a big employment problem, in my view, partly is the fact people can't get the capital in the name of safety. It's insane. Other issue.
I don't need this or that. Do we have federal reserve?
Yes, yes.
Can't hear you.
Federal Reserve. Yeah, it's a huge issue. I know some Paulistas in here. Yeah, right? Hot on the Federal Reserve. Does anybody even understand the Federal Reserve? I don't. I mean, I teach it, but I don't understand it. And I love it. I always see these polls, man on the street while they're for the Federal Reserve. They think it should be audited. I guarantee you, walk down University Avenue, 99 out of 100 people can't tell you what the Federal Reserve does. Anyway, but it needs, it's an interesting issue. So Federal Reserve passed a bill. Uh, Commissioner Sue Better, the only adult on the commission.
This is extremely long. I don't even know where to start.
Right, I'm not supposed to.
The Federal Reserve had nothing to do with the federal government. That is almost incredible, but, you know, this is long. But I think one of the big things that President Yoho, besides all the executive orders that are just incredible, the war on fossil fuel and the unbelievable subsidizing of quote-unquote sustainable energy that's been destroying the country and, and the cost of power.
Yeah, that's a really good point, yeah. The war on hydrocarbons. And I think, I think Ted talked about that. Again, I, this is the last time I'll, the last time I'll, I'll try to not comment on stuff. You do understand, I was in the coal mine those last few years. You do understand we're, we're floating on a sea of hydrocarbons. We have at least 1,000 years of hydrocarbons. If you're concerned about pollution, that's where we should put the money. The whole thing is all about control. It's not about energy.
Yeah, that's right.
And you gotta understand the significance and stuff. And that's why we have to stay involved. It's like, it's like they come from 1,000 different directions and the goal is always the same, which is more control of us for our own good. We have two very different ideologies at work and we're split as a nation. Yeah.
I'd like to find out why, um, Holder hasn't been guided? Why charges are not granted? Why he isn't in a military office because he was breaking the law and has been found guilty of breaking and lying to Congress?
Right.
And why aren't you doing anything?
Good question. There's two there, actually, that's the one. One is Eric Holder, why has he not been impeached? And the other is, how can you have officials generally come before the Congress to say nothing to the press? And why? And then get away with it, right? One of the classic statements, I think it came from James Clapper, who's a national security, one of the security people three weeks ago. He said, I told the least untruthful thing I could. I mean, this is, this is beyond belief. Who's next?
Is anybody in here concerned about the Internal Revenue Service?
Oh, yeah, yes.
I should have been first thing on the...
Should IRS the scandals, should have been the first thing. I think most of us agree with that. And again, my real quick footnote is, I think we all have to understand the significance of what the Obama people have done here. And they used the IRS...
That's right.
As a political weapon. I've now read some analysis of the, uh, swing states. And there's a good argument to be made that had the Tea Party turned out in the same percentage that they did in 2010, that Romney would have won in those states. All right? And this is significant. But here, I believe, is the more significant thing. The reason we have to stay hot, if I can sell it on this issue, is this. It is the first time I can see in history where the IRS has been used against us, little people. The Democrats say, oh, well, Nixon did it. Well, Nixon's director, the IRS said, no, I'm not gonna do it. We're not gonna do it. And the second thing is, it's always been used, when it's been used, against political enemies, other big shots. This is the first time they've come after normal people.
Right.
Have to understand the significance of that. Hugely, hugely, hugely significant and dangerous. And I have people yawning now, well, we gotta talk about the NSA. Right? Because the IRS is, is all news. Better not be all news.
That's right.
Who's next?
Let's shut down the Department of Education and the Department of Energy.
Yes. Yeah.
The Department of Education and the Department of Energy. You think they have different names, right? Because they're both DOE. That's unusual for people that have... Yeah, good point.
Next question?
Please.
Going back to the IRS, I really think this is a prime opportunity for us to take that opportunity to mandate a fair flat tax.
Yeah.
That way, we are not under the charm of IRS.
You're still basing it on income. You need to get away from income, lady.
However, it would be a far better system than we have right now. And I think it's imperative that we really push to get a fair flat tax in place.
So let me, let me ask you a question. How many people, Roz, other than you? How many people here have actually either been to a session or read reasonably extensively about the fair tax and can explain it? Okay, that is very good. Because what I hear all the time, and I even, I've heard it from Ted, although not lately, is the fair tax is an extraordinarily good idea. It's a marketing issue because it's, one, easy to demagogue and, two, difficult for most people to explain. I am, I'm exuberant giving all the people that pay attention. Means all of us can go out there and explain the fair tax. And that's what Ted was saying. Right? That we need to get behind it and talk about it and get enough people behind it. Again, the issue of fair tax is a great idea. It's just not so easy to explain.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, I watched some of that stuff that I've done, everything on the television. And I don't like all these people who I don't know. I don't, I don't recall. Uh, but they apparently are against, I mean, exempt from incarceration. But they do have a pension. Now, that money can be used to shore up the security, Medicare and Medicaid.
That's an interesting idea. Pass the bill. It's like, I guess the question is, how do we deal with government employees that refuse to testify before Congress? And actually, a quick note on the process. If anybody has watched the process, is you have people that come before Congress, they lie. All right? They can then be excoriated for lying and they could be prosecuted. Then who has to prosecute? Eric Holder of the Department of Justice. That's why you see Lois Lerner, who's the poster child for the IRS. I argue the acting the way she is because she knows she's never gonna be prosecuted. It's an interesting wrinkle in the system that's taken us centuries to get to this point. Who's next?
Over here.
Just a second. Bank of Benghazi.
Uh huh.
For future records, they keep a law of exactly where the president is at all times. Now, why is it that they can, either party, go back and say, okay, where was the president? Was he watching in the same room that he watched and lied to me and killed him? Where was he? That should be public record. They should know where he was and it should be brought to a count.
That's a really good point. Where the question, back on Benghazi, Pastor, one of the questions under that is where was the president? And there's some interesting answers to that question. Or potential answers to that question. One has to surmise that he was doing something that he would be embarrassed to admit he was doing. Really? Think about it. Well, somebody just said, I've talked about this on my show. Somebody said smoking dope. I never thought about that until Bill Maher. Right? Everybody know who Bill Maher is? Said the president was stoned in the first, the first debate with Romney. And when I first heard that, I thought Maher was joking. And then I read some about it and I watched it a couple of times. He wasn't joking. And the president's never been a rehab. If you know anything about drug abuse, right? Very few people can stop on their own. And some IRS, IRS, some Secret Service guys don't make a million dollars writing a book in five years about how he was the dealer for the president. Yeah, I said that. Okay.
You know, some of the CIA people who know a lot about Benghazi have been forced to sign non-disclosure agreements and their families have been threatened.
Yeah.
So we need to, we need to know, we need to know about that. That's just ridiculous. That's gotten, I mean, it's getting to where anybody that doesn't agree or toe the, not just the party line, but the, but the, you know, the extreme party line, is their life is threatened.
Right.
It's coming down.
Yes. Let me make a suggestion. If you want to ruin your life for the next three or four months, let me suggest you read two books. You've probably read them. Read them again. I'm in the middle of Atlas Shrugged, again. I swear to you that Jon Favreau, the original speechwriter, and now the guy that's taking his place, is taking much of Obama's rhetoric from, what's his name? Mouches, standing Mouches speeches as a leader. All right? It's really fascinating. So read Ayn Rand. We're right there. The other one is, many Westerners are required to read George Orwell's 1984. And you know, and you see, when I was young and had to read it in high school, I thought, "This is crazy. Will this ever happen?" And now I'm reduced to saying, "How did George Orwell and Ayn Rand notice they wrote these books in the 40s and 50s?" And they could be written today. If you think it's not happening, if your children think it's not happening, if your friends think it's not happening, get them to read that. And if somebody says to you, "I don't like to read," have them read Orwell's Animal Farm. It was originally written as a children's book. And it's very readable. Who's next?
Over here.
Hi, my name's Harold Sage. And we got on to conspiracy theories here a little bit. I wasn't going to say anything, but...
More like a joke.
What was the seminal event that began, that was used as the excuse for the NDAA, for the Homeland Security TSA? We all recall that it was 9/11. Okay? Now, we all need to hack at the root on this issue in order to reveal the truth about what happened to 9/11. Isaac Newton was correct when he said that those Twin Towers could not fall the way they did. And Building 7 could not fall the way they did. Architects and engineers, 2,000 professionals in the building industry, all agree. The FBI agrees with me in a letter from Michael Heimbach from the FBI that the evidence is beyond a reasonable doubt. That action has not been taken to prosecute or bring this thing up for review. This is the reason why you have to be frisked at the airport. This is the reason why Homeland Security has bought a billion bullets, not just target practice bullets, but hollow points, killers. Okay? So this is really hacking at the root. If you want to investigate that, if you want to look at the science behind it, go to save.com, S-A-I-V-E dot com. It's the most important documentary for an American patriot today.
Thank you. All right, listen, America is great because we have different views. It's, in a way, difficult to comprehend. Let me do this. We're going to run short of time here. Ted talked about a number of issues and didn't, who brought up and then didn't get a chance to talk about any of them. Can we run through them and let me get a sense? Food stamps. Right? And nutrition. I noticed that Congressman Yoho has switched from food stamps to nutrition. I'm still on food stamps. $80 million out of $100 million fund going.
Same as slavery.
Same as slavery. So food stamps. Thoughts? Safety net? Income redistribution? How do you feel about food stamps?
Income redistribution. That is.
Okay, so how many here are for having, going beyond a safety net with food stamps? Does anybody have a problem with food stamps as a safety net?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay? All right? Yes? Anybody that does not have a problem with food stamps as a safety net? Yeah. It's a very important, conceptually, no, but they always grow.
Right, right.
All right. How about immigration? Comfortable with Congresswoman's position on immigration?
None.
No bills from the House?
None.
We have martial laws.
Yes.
As it is.
That's what he said. He said that.
Right. Just a quick note on the Congress in general. Any bill or law they pass in this session, they can do something with in the next session. Right? And it's worked for a couple of hundred years, but it can be very scary.
Did I mention something about immigration?
Yes, sir.
I'm involved in it. I hire illegals. Most people don't want to hear that. Okay? Everything is a very, very complicated situation. And I believe that, I don't think you're going to build a fence to do anything any good. Now, go to build a fence, go ahead. You're getting people starving dead over here and then you're getting people over here that can't hire anybody. There's no Americans to do it.
You're starving and starving stuff too? You sound just like the other ones.
I'm talking about Mexicans in Mexico.
Give her a microphone.
Over here on this side, you can not hire Americans to do it.
You got to have food stamps.
We're a nation of laws.
Hmm. Not anymore.
One suggestion I have is that if we start with the Congress, reducing the entitlement programs
Yes.
by small percentage every every section of Congress. 3% here, 5% there. Pretty soon you're going to have Americans that will do the jobs and Americans won't do that.
That's right.
Because they'll be hungry.
Yeah, that's right.
All right? And if the Americans are able to put those jobs, then there will be support to closing that border. And we hear over and over and over again, "Hey, we can't round up 11, 15 million people." Yes, we can. Germany did it in 1930. So they didn't have the technology to do that. And they did it for a more nefarious purpose. We can do it if we want.
That's a really good point.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
When I got out of the military, I had been in a plane crash and it took them six months to rehab me before I could walk again. Now, I had a few lived limitations. But I tried to get a job and they wouldn't hire me. Even on the dairy, the Navy Cav. I didn't care what it was. But they wouldn't hire me. They had to hire illegals. Now, something's wrong with them.
That's right.
I mean, actually, all of this is an interesting comment on how, the issues really are complex. And what we have to ask Ted Yoho and people like Ted Yoho to do is be Alexander the Great with the Gordian knot. You have to use your sword to cut it. You can't adjust these things, is what's become very clear to me. Yes, sir.
We have such a government-controlled news media.
Yes.
And they tell us what to think and then what we're to think about it. This gentleman over here, I believe he said his name was Harold Sage.
Sage, S-A-I-V-E.
Mr. Sage. Sir, I'm John Sherman Simpson. You mentioned something about the Department of Homeland Security buying billions or a trillion or something around of hollow points. Well, it was half again, that figure. Now, I've become an addict to the worldwide web. You can read anything there from one extreme to the other. And I've tried to inform myself. I'm a modestly discharged military veteran. I have a college degree from the University of Florida. I still think I have a fairly high IQ. So I have to discern what I'm reading on the internet. Just recently, I think within the last week, I read that the Department of Homeland Security cannot account for that billion and a half grams of hollow point ammunition, which is not target or practice ammunition. And I am very concerned about our government being so untransparent that we can't even be told or let to be known there is an official certificate for Mr. Obama from Kenya. He is not eligible to be president.
That's right.
And I will not call him Obama.
That's right. Absolutely right.
All right. I really wanted to, I want to ask you, ask a personal favor before you leave Jordan's. Personal favor. I want to do a little market research. Statistically insignificant. How many of you listen to the radio for information on those things? How many of you listen to the radio online, internet radio? Let me ask you this. If you had an internet radio player look like a radio app and is clack like a radio you're used to, would you listen to internet radio?
Yeah.
Yeah. Maybe, yeah, maybe more.
They have them.
All right. I mean, I'm looking, everybody's, not everybody, but many of the people have hair colors similar to mine. And we're a transition generation, right? And I'm trying to get a sense of the technology. Let me ask you this. If you, if you could get information that you felt was useful, helpful, and entertaining, would you pay a couple bucks a month to listen?
Sure.
True. Could you get it in the car? If you could get it in the car, which that's where most of us listen, would you listen? Would you pay? Okay. Perfect. Need to be able to get it in the car in the house. We're, we're working on this. I just do a little ad hoc market research for you. There's some big questions. You know, but if you look at what's happening, obviously, our station was bought out. They changed the format. If you don't like techno music, you're a little bit disappointed. You know, stuff, we're talking. But we're, it looks like we're moving on and we're, we're trying to get a sense of where we're going and I'm blocked out of the business plan. So you're really helpful.
We have one last question because we've got to wrap it up. One last question.
Yeah, this doesn't have to do with Ted at all. Tom Moore. I have a pretty deep voice. And I think we need to start, people bang. Oh, are we on, sorry, anyone?
Let, you know, that's, let me just, real quickly to that. The guy who said, you know, this wasn't such a great turnout. I don't have a sense of whether it was good or not good. Okay? At this, but you're right. We all look around and see that Adam change here. And it seems to us, spending a lot of time and energy on this, the solution ultimately is each one touch one. All right? You have to talk to people. And what I've always shared, every place I've gone, is I don't argue over issues. I just talk about what's important to me and I ask people if they're paying attention. And I don't care where people come out, but I'm passionate about people paying attention. And it's really, it really is one by one. And Ted talked about organizing for America, which is now organizing for Action. And it's the online micro-marketing operation that's starting out as America for Obama and then America for Action. America, it's Obama, then America, and now it's Action. Organizing for, it's a lot of money from some of the Google people and owners. And they're the ones, if you got any of these emails, I was on a mailing list. If you got an email and said, you know, "Tom, we know you're a bit older and if Barry doesn't get reelected, the Republicans are going to reduce Social Security." How the hell do they know? Right? That's how they know. All right? And our, as the Republicans are putting a lot of energy into this in a very positive way, these people working on this. But as the Republican Party catches up and conservatives catch up, the only current solution is the old-fashioned one is we need to talk to people. Not in a way that makes them pass out as a sign of agreement, but you've got to talk to people. And like today, that's a really good point. If you want a bigger crowd, next time Ted shows up or someone shows up, bring somebody who, in addition to what you did. It's not so easy to do. So.
Let me, let me just follow up on that point. In Gilchrist County, the Tea Party, prior to the election last year in November, was very well attended. We were getting 100 people at our meeting, plus or minus. But we were getting great crowds. And after the election, it died. And a lot of people were very disappointed. They were disheartened. It didn't work out the way it wanted to. But in Gilchrist, over 70% of the people that we're supporting passed and have got elected. And that's something positive. I mean, there are very few areas where a Tea Party's supporting that kind of number